Please stand with us, we'll be led in prayer. Alderman Flores, would you mind leading us in prayer?
Absolutely.
So we'll be led in prayer by Alderman Flores and then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. So be led by Alderman large George Payne.
Dear heavenly father, we come to you tonight, we ask for discernment and wisdom as we contemplate city business. Father, and we ask that on this Thanksgiving week that you be with all here and all the residents of South Haven. And that you grant them safe holiday, father, and continue to bless the city. In your presence and standing in prayer, Christ Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a planning commissioner appointment. Alderman Hoots, would you like to make a motion to approve an addition to the planning commission?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Divvy McGee as my planning commissioner.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, we have a second by Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a contract with OPC, our city attorney Nick Manley.
Yeah, this contract with OPC, it's currently in the near future, just it's more it's for cancellation. But the city utility department will begin phasing out the need to use current third, current third-party vendors OPC ACH for their credit debit transactions and based on fully switching over to Tyler, which is compatible with the MUNIS system. And so at this point, the contract with OPC, which will not, will no longer be needed, even though it's only you, will be used in the addition, in the event of an ACH transfer, I mean debit, which will not occur after this transfer to the MUNIS type system. The contract OPC needs to be terminated. It does have a sixty-day termination clause for convenience, along with a, it was done in two thousand fifteen, so can't bind this board. So the theory of, the contract will be canceled based on the contractual terms of itself, the sixty-day termination clause for convenience, along with it cannot be binding to this board. So just need action to officially terminate that contract with OPC is not, is no longer needed by the utilities department.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the resolution to declare our holiday employment schedule for the city.
Yeah, this resolution just sets forth the Friday and the Christmas Eve as the holidays. There are some are done by statute, so it's need authorization for resolution holidays.
So move, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda are city contracts with direct connections.
Yeah, these contracts with direct connections are for the phone system and hardware, along with installation for the city parks, fire section number five when completed, and the city public works building. This city direct was the low quote for this project. So the authorization for Michael Norris to sign these contracts with direct connections for all three entities. And then also the contract for at request, proposed request, a fifty percent down payment based on direct connections, financial capability, along with the service fee provided. Before makes a finding, we can't pay that fifty percent down in accordance with the AG opinions on this issue. So tonight, we need authorization for Michael Norris to sign these contracts, along with in the, his discretion, pay the fifty percent down payment before services provided, based on the fact that the direct connections can't complete the contract. And that's how the power capacity to complete the contract.
I'll make that motion, mayor.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda are fire station number five change orders.
Yeah, these change orders is similar to the last meeting, the, as you recall, the board has approved authorization of change orders by the consulting architect, consulting architect A two eight in the fire department. These change orders are an amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. It's associated for the electrical, electrical changes that require for the HVAC and sprinkler adjustments. It has been reviewed by A two eight and approved. So tonight, just need author, no, no authorization is needed, just making a note that these being put it in the, it would be included in the minutes as required by your prior motion and thirty-one, seven thirteen. So that's it, just an update on that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of y'all say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval to seek proposals for garbage, rubbish, and recycling services.
It's not, you just need authorization to go seek proposals, which will not go out for a couple more weeks probably. But our current contract with waste connections for all three services expires April thirtieth. So the public works department will start drafting the proposals that will be required under law to seek for the proposals that we need to authorize a new contractor. Ideally, we'll do that in the first quarter of next year, after it's been sent out for review. And then the proposals are received. One caveat to it tonight, just as an FYI, when we're looking at the proposals and doing the contract negotiations, Mississippi law does allow for a ten-year contract now in the, once you do a reward or award the proposals for, as a contract. So you can do a six-year contract with four one-year extensions, so it'd be a ten-year total in the event the board wants to go that route. So, but tonight, we can talk about that in more detail, once the proposals are received and the contract negotiations begin. But tonight, we just need authorization to authorize the seeking up proposals for this service. And the, once the proposals are received, I know there'll be much discussion and review of those as well with the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second.
We have a motion from Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to see us make it where they can, companies can bid on just one of those three things, not have to be all three of them at one time.
I think we did that, didn't we?
Yes, that's the way it's been in the past. And that's, you had an option to do all three or individual, so.
Yeah, whatever's best for the, for the city.
Right.
Obviously, you know, when there's more volume, usually you get better service, but not necessarily in today's world, so. So we'll keep it that way and whatever is best for us, whether it be all together or individual, that way the board can approve that. Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is CE and I contracts for Getwell multi-use path and the airways res servicing projects, which are again, both of the MPO projects for this four-year cycle that the city received.
Correct, and it's just approving the CE and I for these projects in accordance with the MDOT regulations. Since this is considered a small purchase project by MDOT regulations, the LPA coordinator for the city has recommended that Civil Link be the CE and I engineering firm that will, or the CE, Civil Link be the kind, the engineer that does the CE and I for these two projects. And that will be reflected in the minutes as approved by the board, along with a letter from the mayor's office, based on the recommendation and the action of the board.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on our agenda is, again, after our last discussion, we have a proposed resolution for the commercial vehicle ordinance.
It's, yeah, it's in your pocket and it's basically, and I know there'll be a lot more discussion on this, so I'll just give you the highlights and sit down and let y'all talk. But the, what's been proposed is just having a, a ordinance that, first of all, has a chart on it to give examples as provided by the federal regulations, along with prohibiting vehicles parked in residential loan, residential zones, which are classified as class three and have a gross vehicle ra, rating of ten thousand and one pounds or more, except for the heavy-duty pickup truck, which does not have a modified truck bed. And then also would prohibit trailers that would exceed sixteen feet in length. And as part of the ordinance, you have a, it would be included in the ordinance for illustrative purposes only, but it would have those type of vehicles that are allowed and not allowed. So class three and below would not be allowed in a residential zone as commercial vehicles. Class one and two would be allowed, with the exception, on class three, you can have the heavy-duty pickup truck, as long as it's not been modified with modified truck bed. So that was based on the discussion that we had last meeting, as far as the drafting of it. Obviously, there may be more questions and happy to answer them, and obviously the mayor can as well, not better than I can. So anyway, that's for consideration. There's no vote tonight, because since it is a zoning ordinance, it has to be advertised before we do anything with it as for hearing. So tonight, just brought it again for discussion.
And I'll just catch us up from our last discussion. You know, we already, we had the ordinance for this that we did a few years ago, based on the, the weight of the vehicle. And, and if you remember, I stated last time that we felt like that we could move, since some of the things that changed with vehicles, that we could move away from weight, but we kind of went full circle with it. And actually, we're kind of trying to reinvent the wheel. And so this was already out there, the federal government already had this chart out there. And so Whitney presented this to us in our meeting, and we all kind of dropped what we're talking about and said, well, there you go. That pretty much, that's, you know, quit reinventing the wheel, there it is. And so that's how we got where we are. So the only thing that I would explain that we added, as Nick stated, but, so basically, whatever it is, if it's class one or two, that's allowed. So there's a picture, you can see everything there. Then if it's class three, you're getting into the bigger, bigger stuff. The only thing that would be allowed would be the heavy-duty pickup. The only thing that we felt like we needed to add on there is now, as y'all know, like with our recent bucket truck purchase and all the delays that we have with getting vehicles, private businesses are going through the same thing. So what a lot of them are doing, they're converting pickup trucks that, that are heavy-duty and have, you know, great hauling capacity. They're changing them to be some of the things that you're going to see in class four through eight. So if we didn't add something about the pickup bed, then you could get into some of these other things that you're seeing in four through eight that are just basically added to a, the chassis and bed of, I mean, not bed, but the cab, the, the truck part itself, without the bed. So that's why we did that, and then we left the trailer thing in, and that's, it's pretty simplified. So that's, that's how we got where we are today, so.
Mayor, what about parking them on the street? Do we decide, I thought we said we wanted, I'll be parked in the driveway.
The, this has to do with anywhere, whether it be in the, on the driveway or in, because really, if it's, I mean, obviously, if it's in the street, it's a different issue as far as like blocking traffic, that kind of thing. But the goal of the ordinance is to preserve the property values of a residential neighborhood. So if it's parked in the driveway, you know, you're getting the same thing, really, whether it's parked in the driveway or the street.
I personally would like to see us add that to it, where the commercial vehicles have to be parked in the driveways.
Are you talking about adding to it?
Right.
Any, you're talking about classes one, two?
Any of those have to be parked in the driveway, they can't be parked on the street.
Do we have anything already that would address that, Whitney, or do you understand what Alderman Hoots is saying?
Yeah, I feel like we already had that, and there is another, is a separate section. We already have that, so this is just another, this is just another section, we can reiterate it in here, but there's always something that's fine parked on the street.
I think I'd like to see us do that, that way you'd make it clear, that when somebody just goes to this ordinance, they can see that, so.
Okay.
I'll be honest with you, there's some class four that I'm okay with having.
Hold on, let's back up. We need to make a motion to discuss it, but to make sure we get it done right. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion Alderman Flores, a second Alderman Jerome, and go ahead Alderman, I'm sorry.
There are some class four that fall in that category that I don't have a problem with being a residential. I don't want them on the street, I'm okay with them being in the driveway. Because there are.
Some big trucks.
Mike, you'll pull up those photos? That's a four fifty.
Does that mean it's a class four?
Yep. According to the.
Would you go back to the first one?
No, there's actually a better example, but we can do, we can go with that one.
I'm just making sure the rest of the board understands what you're saying. So you're saying, you're saying that you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
As long as it's, it's in the driveway, I don't want it on the street.
My concern is that could be an on-call truck. Maybe it's a bucket truck, that could be an on-call truck.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you don't, you know, if you don't, if you don't add something that amends the bed, you're going to allow that. And I, I hear what you're saying, Alderman, but I, I don't, I don't know if the full, rest of the board like to hear what y'all think. But if you're allowing something like that, that's why I said last time, I mean, there comes a point where if you're going to allow that, then let's just strike the ordinance and let people park wherever they want.
Let, let's go through the photos, just a couple more. That one.
I'm fine with that truck.
Well, that's on, that's on one and.
That's not, it's non-standard bed.
No, it's on one, that's class one, it's a pickup truck.
I'm good with that, as long as we clarify that.
All right, well, so let me clarify to make sure everybody understands what Nick and what I'm saying. The, the bed reference is class three or higher. So one or two, that's going to be classified as one or two, so that doesn't, would not apply.
Next.
What if that was a three fifty or four fifty?
That's a two fifty.
Let's just go back to it, now I'll ask the question. What if that was a two fifty or a three fifty or four fifty with the same bed, same truck?
When you get to the four fifty, you're getting a class four.
I understand, but as far as it looks, as far as it looks, it looks the exact same, so it'd have four fifty on the side.
Three fifty with the same bed would be.
Class three.
Uh, yeah, it'd be a class three. And I'd be okay with that as a three fifty with that bed on it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm fine with that bed too, because that's, there's a lot of trucks out there.
Sure, I don't want it on the street.
I don't either.
I'm okay with the driveway. All right, go to the next one. That's a four fifty. It's, it's a tow bed, but a four fifty chassis is considered a class four. There again, I don't have a problem with that being in their driveway. If that, that's man's main, you know, purpose of income, source of income, I'm okay with it, if it's in his driveway.
What about the enclosed ones, didn't you have some pictures of those?
Keep going.
And see, I think, hang on, I think that one is a bit big to have in the driveway.
That's a box truck, we said last week we didn't want box trucks.
That, yeah. That would be a what, that's going to be a four?
That's class three.
It's, but it's a box truck period, we said we wouldn't do, I don't know. I don't, we're too hung up on the weight.
Yeah.
But a, but a box trucks, I don't, I'm with you on that.
I agree. Next. I don't think, I don't think it's a problem for anybody right there, right?
No.
Okay, next. That's a four fifty. That's a service truck. It could be an on-call truck, it could be a, that guy's, you know, it could be a welder on the back, he's a welder, that's his, you know, job. Why can't he park in the driveway? But it's a four fifty chassis truck, makes it a class four.
Now, that would be, according to this chart, that would be a class three.
And that would be okay, right?
Not a four fifty chassis, according to the Federal Highway Administration, this chart here, that's going to be a class four. Does it mean a four fifty makes it a class four? Uh, chassis only.
You're saying based on the, you're saying based on the weight alone, that, because this, this chart clearly, and that's why the rest of we like it. I mean, it lays the pictures out, I mean, it's the easiest thing for people to administer.
The pictures aren't all, all, they're not all-inclusive.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. The only thing, and I'm, I'm going to let you all aside, but the only thing, I'm going to say it again, this is, this was a simplified example. And we can do it however y'all want, but our code enforcement guys have got to be, it's got to be something that they can administer. And you're, you're having, Robert Booth sat in on our committee meeting, Robert's our public works director and has a history, he's former, you know, in the dump truck business, he's a, he's a commercial vehicle expert, and he did warn about that. He said, if you allow, if you don't put something on there about the bed, you're going to have the four through eight exposures on a, on a, with a pick, with a heavy-duty truck, so.
Let's go to the next photo.
Yeah, but let me stop you just a second, so this, and we can go through all the photos, but, so what the decision, and you've heard Alderman Jerome, but what the rest of the board is going to have to make a decision is, is, you know, he's told you what he's okay with, I personally am not. And I can tell you, a lot of our citizens are not okay with that. So the board is going to have to make a decision considering all that, but go ahead and flip them, let's see.
Hey, I just looked up the curb weight on a Ford F four fifty, and it's between seventy-seven hundred and eighty-five hundred pounds.
It's a class.
We asked.
But that, that's curb, that's not the G B W R.
Right, but I mean, hell.
It makes a difference.
You're talking about adding eight thousand pounds to the bed, that's more truck weighs. Go ahead.
That truck there, I believe, that's a four fifty. That would be considered a class four, because it's, it's a chassis. The bed got added later. We're going to say that's not allowed.
So we're going with G B R or we going with curway?
G B W R.
That's what this whole chart is about, it's about G B W R.
And see, I think that's too big.
It's a box truck, we.
Yeah.
That's a short one, it's actually a short one, it's actually a small one.
Right, but we still a box, we, we said the box.
I agree, I agree. I'm not crazy about that either. Now that, imagine a plumbing truck. Don't think about it as being a damn fire department truck.
I've got several like that, that are plumbing trucks that, I mean, I don't personally have a problem with that.
Yeah.
What would that be considered, heavy-duty pickup or?
Yeah, that'd be a heavy-duty pickup.
Well, believe not, what they consider as heavy-duty, and what we consider as heavy-duty.
We talked about the.
That's actually a three fifty.
And we looked at, remember I asked the question? We looked it up, the G B W R for the pickup trucks fell underneath fourteen thousand pounds. We looked at that. So I think that may be hanging us up a little bit here, if it's, if it's.
It says ten thousand, that's what the class three starts on with.
Yeah, but I'm saying the max, like, like you can have a large, going up to fourteen thousand pounds G B W R, that's a big, that's a big.
It can be a big, I agree with you.
So that's what I'm saying, I think that.
G B W R, it can be big, you know what box you put on there.
Yeah, that's, again, that's to the point, that's why the recommendation to address the bed when you get above ten thousand, because you can, you know, you're already allowing, actually, I believe this is more lenient than the one we had, when you're allowing one and two and three, as long as it doesn't have a modified bed, but, but anyway, go ahead, show us all the photos.
But see, the thing is, go back one, if you don't mind. There's no picture of that on this chart.
Yeah, that, that is not on there.
No, so you're going to run into issues, I don't want the code enforcement guys get the situation where, okay. And I, I love the fact that Nick put the chart on here, thanks Nick, did a great job. But there's going to be some situations where the, there's not going to be a photo on here, on here for them to match. So, I mean, it's, it is so hard to, you know, try to dial this in to, to get really what we want. And the thing is, what do we really want? And the thing is, what do we really want? I don't wanna keep someone from me, you know, be able to make a living, because they can't park the truck at home.
Well, I mean, I hate to, I'm not trying to be your adversary, but again, the Snap-on Tools guys got just every bit of right to make a living is, I mean, you're picking and choosing on what occupation your people, the bottom line is, it's not about picking and choo-
Totally against the big box truck. But I could see Alderman Wheeler's point on not having the box truck in the driveway.
Right, and I think a lot of other, this.
You know, considering my father-in-law was a chip guy for Golden Flank, and he parked his truck on Valley Springs in his driveway?
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a reason that this chart is in existence, because other governments have faced the same issue that we have. I think there's, that's the whole reason this, this chart was, was created. So, I don't know, y'all are, if, we're gonna get into that, I mean, I, I don't think I've ever said this during my mayoral career, but I'm gonna let y'all have this one. You know, because I, I don't know what else to do. I mean, we, we've gone to people that have done this before, and this is what they come up with. Um, the only thing I'll say is that you haven't heard from all your citizens yet. There's a lot of citizens that don't agree with some of the comments that are being made here. They're not here, uh, but if we change this ordinance and allow some of these things, you're, I'm gonna hear from them, and then eventually we're all gonna hear from them, because there is no doubt that you have to have this type of ordinance, or it's gonna, it's gonna impact your residential property values.
What about if we, if we, the way you got it there, if we just take out the part where it says, uh, except for heavy-duty pickup, and just stop right there, and then take out which does not have a modified truck bed. Just take, just take that, which does not have a modified truck bed, out of there, and then we can stick with our, we know what our limits are, weight-wise, and we know kind of what we, you know, what we're talking about, we won't, you know, we wanna approve, you know, they can have the work beds and that kind of stuff.
So, hold on, let's back up. What's our biggest concern here? Independent contractors that are residents of the city, correct?
Right.
Is that what we're concerned about?
Right.
Exactly.
So if they're independent contractors that have, that are residents of the city, and they're self-employed, would they not have to file for a business license in City of South Haven?
I would say.
If they're home-based businesses, right?
Well, you have a lot of them that are plumbers.
If you've got a home-based business and you have a truck, I don't know why you won't make them exempt. Because that's, that's taking care of your problem. That's taking care of the issue. The issue is, independent contractors who have a home-based business who have work trucks. Isn't that what I just asked?
So what about the people who work for plumbing companies that bring home their vehicles? Let me.
If they're on-call.
Yep.
I would say technically they're all on-call.
Uh, that's mine. And then if they work for a plumbing company that's big enough, they park, they're just like everybody else, they go work, park their car, get their truck. That's what a lot of plumbers do.
It's not a far-fetched concept that people park a commercial vehicle on commercial property.
Correct.
I'm sorry to tell everybody that, that's not a far-fetched idea.
But if you're an independent contractor who has a home-based business, then you should have a license with the city.
And they would be exempted.
And in my opinion, you make them exempt.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I'm either fine with that or just eliminating, I, I have a problem it having to be a regular truck bed, because I know there are utility truck beds that are
Well, they'll take care of it there.
Thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of tools in these. You just can't park somewhere else.
But, but I'm gonna say this.
And they're also not obstr- uh, 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 I don't think that they're necessarily degrading the neighborhoods. I don't think most people are complaining about, you know, just that, like a, a, a plumber truck or a, a HVAC, you know, somebody who has an HVAC business with a, with a utility truck bed, um.
But I, I, I'm gonna add to that. I think class four and above don't belong in residential streets.
I agree.
Cause what, and let me, while we're on that topic, and again, I just.
We've got some class four that.
I'm just saying, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I'd agree to.
When I say class four, I, I'd see the, I'd see those, well, I've lost them. The uh, the, the pictures here? I, I'm, I'm with none of those box trucks, but uh, I think the weight, I think we're hung up on the weight when that class four, you know, if somebody has a, it's hard to get to fourteen thousand pounds with a, with a, with a bed on the back. I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Sure, sure. But it can be class four. It can be considered class four.
I think you're getting.
Because of L four fifty is the only reason.
Yeah, because of the four fifty. I'm just telling you, if you have a home-based business, and you register your business, and you have a business license with the city of South Haven, I think they're exempted.
What if they work for the city of South Haven, they drive an F four fifty?
They're on-call.
Why? Cause we just, I'm making it say they're on-call?
Cause they're on-call. That's why.
So basically what you're saying is, anybody that has a class four, all they have to say is they're on-call.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Sure.
What I'm saying is, class four and above, they're out. Is that, did you understand that, what you said? Was that what I not said?
Yeah, you said four and above is out.
Four and above's out.
No, I'm gonna say there's some of the class four that should be allowed.
Well, you know, what, what about if we?
We don't have to come to a compromise, William.
What about, on something like that, if, you know, if, we can just say this, this is our standard, you know, with the, we have the heavy-duty, which we got three fifty or four fifty. If you've got something other than that, then if code enforcement goes out and says, hey, look, you're in violation, I mean, they can appeal to come before us, and we can look at it and, and, and see if it's.
Man, you're talking about a, you're talking about a circus.
Plus, you have to make it easier for, for code enforcement to do, to, to enforce it.
Right.
There can't be no ambiguity.
Can you just say?
They're gonna, they're gonna find.
Can you just allow class one and two and heavy-duty pickup trucks, which would include a class four?
Yes, but what I, I wanna make sure everybody heard me when I said it to begin with. If that's what y'all wanna do, then let's vote on it next time and do it. However, what you're gonna do, because of the current supply chain problems, what's going up, going on now, is a lot of people are taking heavy-duty pickups, and they're doing class five, six, seven kind of stuff with that. They're, they're modifying the bed. We, well, Alderman, we just looked at one. We looked at a.
They had the crane on the back of it.
Yeah, the heavy-duty truck that's got a, a, a crane on the back, and then you look at the rack truck, you know, I mean, that's something you see, you know, a load of chickens riding in down the interstate. I mean, somebody could take a pickup truck, change that bed, and that's a class six exposure that's on a heavy-duty pickup truck. That's why it's important about the bed. But again, if y'all wanna do that, then that's a real simple fix. We can leave it like it is and just take out the part about modifying the bed, but just know that this won't be the last you've heard about it. You're gonna have some citizens that are gonna say, whoa, 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 you see what's in, in, in the driveway next to me now? Cause it's a heavy-duty pickup that's been modified to do class six, sometimes even class seven type work on it. But if y'all are okay, I mean, that's, again, if you, we, we've talked this thing to death, if y'all are okay with that, then we can ta- easily take that out, and we can uh, do it that way.
I think if you do that, that gives us a, 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 a good compromise, and, I mean, if we start seeing something like that popping up that they're trying, they're trying to modify.
You're gonna, I can tell you now, we didn't walk in here without researching that. You're gonna see that. You're gonna see that, because, well, you actually sent me photos this week, right? So you of all people know that it's out there, and so if we're expecting our code officers to stop that, we gotta give them some clear guidelines to go on.
Yeah, we, that, that was definitely, and Owen, he's moved to another location. He's parking up across from Sid's now. We got a guy that's dropping his truck off, and it was just dropping it off in the neighborhood.
And nobody, and I'm gonna say it again, nobody's trying to pick on a self-employed person. It's just that we, there is a bigger picture, you know, you have to, there's zones for a reason, you know, to protect the values of people's property. And although one of us may not, you know, as, as we hear our discussion, we all say, well, I'm okay with that, or that doesn't bother me, or, but you gotta have something that's uniform, because you're gonna have citizens that don't agree. That may not be offensive to you personally, but you gotta understand that there's citizens that aren't gonna like a chicken truck parked in their driveway next to them.
Mayor, did we also?
As long as there aren't live chickens in it. As long as there aren't live chickens in it at the moment.
You okay with the chicken smell and, and all the stuff that goes with it?
Did we, we're, we're, we're gonna repeat in there, but they gotta be parked in the driveway in this ordinance also?
We can, you, you'll have to make a motion and let, make sure the board agrees with you, but we can, we can um, alright, why don't we do this, since, help us move the ball down the field a little bit? Let's first of all, make a motion to reiterate the fact that you wanna see in this ordinance, uh, not just on the property, but you wanna reiterate the fact that you don't want them on the street.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, okay, we got a motion by, everybody understand what we're doing?
Yeah.
So we got a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any more discussion about that? So we're not changing anything, we're just, you're hearing this, Nick? We're just gonna reiterate what's in a previous um,
Ordinance.
number in the same ordinance. But I don't see how that does any harm for clarity either, so there's, if there's no other discussion, um, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second, what becomes the second issue from what I'm hearing, is we all agree that we're okay with classes one and two. And before I get into that, uh, Alderman Wheeler, you said it's not so much the weight, um, that's why I was saying, we kinda went full circle, because I was thinking the same way you are, and we, we, we did, we sit down and start making a list, like, we, we know this is bad. And then, then before long, we're like, but it could be this, and it could be that, and it just really became crazy. And then when we looked back at this, we realized that this is how other orga- governmental organizations have done this, so it is based on GBWR.
Alright, so, real quick, so a two fifty with a utility truck bed, where would that fit in this?
It would be okay.
Class three, or is it class two?
Class two.
Here, okay, here's my only issue with what we're, I didn't, I don't, this is, it, I can say the drink bag you can get in pretty easily. But put that same bed on a four fifty, how come it's not? I mean, the only, the only difference in that truck is the, is the suspension, not the body, not the outside. Only difference on the outside is a two fifty or a four fifty written on the side of it.
I agree, be- because the four fifty can have a higher GBWR.
That's it. And so that's why it goes back to GBWR, to answer your question, Alderman, cause that same person could just take that toolbox off the back. And again, I'm not picking on chicken farmers here, but that, that's all they gotta do. Just change the bed and put a, um, and make it a number, a class six, make it that kind of truck. And that's what's happening in today's world. They're doing that. So that's why if you don't put a stipulation about the bed, you know, you could get into that, but.
He's pushing his limits by making it a class six. To go from a four to a six with that chassis, yeah, he's pushing his limits.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you, you get the same exposure is my point, like, you get the same exposure. They're, they're able to, because of that heavy-duty truck, they're able to do exposures that are not the same as a picture that you showed.
Make sure we write in no chicken trucks for sure.
Apparently that's an issue somewhere.
I'm, I'm using as an example, because.
I was about to ask, where's the chicken truck?
Uh, I'm, I'm telling you, and I, and I don't mean to be, sound like a, you know, but I'm telling you, i- it's a matter of days before I will send you an email that shows you somebody that points out, and it may be one of y'all, but you, you see this in a driveway, and you're like, whoa, we don't allow that. And we're like, yeah, y'all remember that discussion? Yeah, we do. Now we do. But anyway, that's the reason that GBWR is critical to this ordinance. Um, because of what can be done with those bigger truck, bigger pick, uh, heavy-duty pickups.
So fourteen thou- fourteen thousand would allow that, I mean, or, or ten thousand would allow pretty much everything that we're talking about. Or would it be, since we're gonna do the, the heavy-duty, are we gonna be fudging a little bit on the, on the numbers on the, on the, the class three?
We can go back and comb, uh, do the research. We can probably Google it right now, but let's don't, we can go back and check, but I think up to fourteen thousand pound GBWR, that's gonna allow a bunch of things.
So we don't want that. So we wanna say ten thousand, and just not really talk about it has to have the standard bed, it's just say.
Right, but if you take the bed thing out, you're gonna take the same truck and, and change it from a class three to possibly even a class six.
But if we leave it at ten thousand though, it won't, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we could do that, and just, it just take out the, the verbiage about the standard bed, but leave it with the ten thousand max, and that would, that would.
Oh, I see what you're, you're saying that it would disqualify, just based on it.
The weight-wise, it would disqualify some of the bigger stuff, like you're talking about, you know, that would be put on the back of them, because it would.
Hmm, uh, that's a good question. We probably need to revisit, we may need to revisit that. So it sounds like the issue, at least, you know, we've moved it down the field, the issue is um, or let me, let me ask you this, and I know we weren't, we're not finalizing this tonight, but just so we can move the ball towards the goal line. Would somebody make a motion that they're okay with all of one, two, and three, with the exception of this further discussion about heavy-duty pickups?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Flores, but with this motion, Alderman Wheeler, are you agreeing that we're not okay with four through eight?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, so we have a motion to make sure everybody understands. We have a motion by Alderman Wheeler that we're okay with allowing one and two and three with further discussion on clarifying the bed issue with a heavy-duty pickup, but we're not allowing four through eight. Is that your motion?
Yes.
And then we got a second, Alderman Flores, is there more discussion about, is everybody following that? More discussion about that?
I'll, I'll agree with that.
Okay. Is there any more discussion about that?
You okay with that?
Nope.
Okay, so roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
No.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, so that helps us move the ball down the field.
Just to be clear, your, your problem with it is that you can have an F four fifty with a regular truck bed that's not gonna be allowed.
I could have an F four fifty with a flat bed on the back, and you're telling me it's not allowed?
That's, that's the reason we're, if y'all will listen, that's the reason the motion is saying that we have not made a decision on a heavy-duty pickup yet. Y'all following that?
But it's, it's still a class four. It's a class four truck.
So we may have to adjust on that one?
Right, we're not finalizing the ordinance tonight. All I'm trying to do is, is trying to bring us.
And I understand that. I know we're not finalizing.
Yeah. But it, but we're, we've not made a decision on a heavy-duty, that's the only thing left in question. That's, y'all see where we're going with that?
That's, that's why this is discussion, and I wanted to understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, so that could, that number could come up, or, you know.
Yes, we could, we can specify, just like we did with this initially, that we specifically addressed heavy-duty pickups. But all we're saying tonight is that we're okay with one, two, and three without the heavy-duty pickup, because we're gonna discuss that further. But we're not okay with four through eight. That's just, that's what the vote is. Is everybody still under, does everybody understand that? Okay, so we had a, that uh, roll call, that, that did pass. Okay, so, sounds like what we need to do is go back and study what a heavy-duty pickup becomes if you add different beds on it.
Obviously, heavy-duty pickup, I think, is the concern.
Yeah, not, not on its own, but what you can do with the bed.
Right.
Cause then it becomes a different use. You know, somebody's, you know, uses it to go deer hunting, they have a, and there are people like that, that have a, a huge truck, and they just like driving a big truck.
If one of my neighbors' four fifty is jacked up, he probably got a hundred fifty thousand dollars in trouble, bumpers and everything.
And they use it for personal use.
Yeah, it's a good looking truck.
But it, but that same truck is a totally different animal if you amend the bed and add some of these other things, and what you're using it for, so. Okay, so we will, um, if that's okay, let's end the discussion there tonight, and uh, we will um, I'm not serious, I'm not quitting. I'm gonna go back, and we're gonna, we're gonna go back and figure this out, right? Nick, quit me? Y'all aren't quitting, are you? Okay.
No, no, no.
And uh, so we'll do a little more research and make this make more sense, and then we'll finalize it. Y'all good with that?
I think we got another foot down the road. I think we got a foot down the road.
Oh, I do too, and, and it's a good discussion. I appreciate the discussion, and like I told y'all from day one, this is not an easy one, because you wanna, you wanna be everything to everybody. You wanna allow that, but it's, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, there's give and take both sides, and there's, it doesn't work like that.
Well, you gotta be careful, because that could really affect a lot of people negatively in the city of South Haven. And I think it's smart that we're having a good discussion, and gonna make the right one, so.
Yeah, no doubt. Well said. Okay, we'll move on from that, and um, next on our agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, move we adopt a resolution to clean private property as presented on this stage.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. There's no planning agenda, Whitney? Okay, nothing on the planning agenda. Next on our agenda is the mayor's report, and um, I know everybody's got Thanksgiving turkey on their mind, but we're not done yet. We're gonna talk about another issue that's, that's real challenging. So, y'all know that for um, many, many years in the city of South Haven, that speed bumps, it was a policy of the city not to have those, and this is before my time. I understand that there, uh, at some point, there was a lawsuit against the city from an accident, somebody hitting a speed bump at high speed. Uh, but since I've been mayor, what has mattered to me is that the number one thing, uh, that, or the two things that you, that are negative about it is it slows emergency vehicles down. And um, you know, if you got somebody that's, you know, having a severe health issue, seconds matter. Um, so that's a big deal if it's slowing vehicles down. Um, the other thing is, a lot of people don't like speed bumps, just because they're obnoxious, you know, the, the, the severe um, change in um, vertical and the, you know, your, uh, what am I looking for, where, you know, you, your shocks and your bumping, so a lot of people don't like that. So then, in about two thousand uh, fourteen, fifteen, then speed humps become somewhat popular in some areas, and the humps are not as obnoxious. Uh, their grade is down, so it's easier to go over those. Uh, their grade is down, so it's easier to go over those. And so the discussion has been, should we allow speed humps in the city? And so it's kinda like this, um, commercial truck ordinance. You're gonna have some people that love speed humps and you're gonna have some people that hate speed humps. And so what we decided to do is we have a, by ordinance, the city has a trans, uh, a, a traffic committee uh, that consists of the police chief, the planning director, the public works director, and the mayor. So we have started doing that. We've been discussion, discussing the speed humps, uh, in detail for many, many months. We decided to experiment with those in a public park, so we put the first two on, uh, Snowdon Lane because we're having tremendous, as the areas develop there, it started to be tremendous speeding in the area of, uh, pedestrians, the walking trails and all that, and, uh, and just to kinda gauge it, you know, look at it, see what it looks like, let's get a feel for it. And so, um, uh, we did that. And then, so now the question is, do we wanna go outside of, uh, city parks and go into residential neighborhoods? And so what we've landed on through lengthy discussion, and again, because we, we wanna be cautious that we're not, um, that we're fair and consistent, however, uh, we know that we don't want these things all over the city, cause for the reason I said, it still slows emergency vehicles down. Um, so what we've landed on, and we don't have anything in ordinance form, this is just an update to all of y'all, is that we would put parameters and then put this thing in ordinance form, and then the parameters that we were talking about were, uh, you would use it on collector streets, which are not arterial roads, obviously, not highways. They're on, they're neighborhood streets, like a, a Chesterfield Drive, um, a, um, Baird Drive and Deer Chase, um, uh.
Clarrington?
Possibly Clarrington, although Clarrington has a lot of traffic, but those are collector streets. Then we would, um, require that it only be allowed in twenty-five mile per hour zones or less because obviously if they're higher than that, there's a reason traffic flows need to move faster. Then, uh, two other components, one is there is a children or pedestrian component, you know, just like we did at Snowdon. We have a lot of people crossing the road right there. We have kids in the, in the park. Um, it, you know, we added another one near the tennis center for obvious reasons, so we would add a component there. Then we would, like Baird Drive is one of the best examples. That's in Ward Six. Baird Drive is the drive that runs parallel, um, to Central Parkway, just north of this, all the DeSoto Central Schools. So you got the, um, elementary, the junior high, or the middle school and the high school. And so there is no doubt, the citizens, I've probably been contacted about that more than any road in the city, and they're like, help us. You know, cars are flying down here. We got kids crossing the street all over Baird. There's your children pedestrian component. It would make a lot of sense to put them on Baird Drive. Then there are situations, Alderman Gallagher is still on the phone with us, he knows the history of Castle Ridge. Well, ca- the other component would be, um, traffic hardships. And, and what we would call a hardship in Castle Ridge is an example that the reason Castle Ridge is a residential neighborhood, um, that was never really designed to be a cut through, but you, but it's, uh, uh, it's in the middle of two major arterial roads. Davis Road, which gets people to Church Road, and then with Getwell Road, obviously being Getwell Road, and then with it being under construction, a lot of people try to dodge Getwell, so they'll cut through College and then they'll go through Castle Ridge. And, and I went and I've listened, Alderman Gallagher has listened to citizens, I've listened to him. One Saturday morning, I put a baseball hat on and went and parked in one of the coves and just said, I wanna see this for my, with my own eyes. Unbelievable how fast people are hauling down. And this is like a curve too. It's not like a straight road. So in my mind, I see that as a, as, as a hardship because it's being created by Davis and Getwell. But I, the answer is, I don't think we can put these all over the city, but I think that they can be useful for us, especially protecting our kids at school crossings. And I think that, um, and you, uh, Alderman Jerome mentioned, um, Clarrington, there's an area on Clarrington, uh, towards the airways side that has a lot of kids crossing there to get to the middle, South Haven Middle School. That could be a potential place.
I was al- also looking at the other side too, between Greenbrook and Sweeney, because it's a straight shot right there.
Yeah.
And people get up to speed pretty good right there.
Well, and that, and it's.
Your buddy gonna get some emails in the next two weeks.
Oh, no, nothing new, been getting them.
Well, I know.
But, but the, that's why I'm explaining this, that the answer is, we can't put these, these are not just to be stopping speeders, okay? Because there's no way, uh, we could put these all over the city. It would be putting our citizens at risk, cause it would be slowing emergency vehicles down. That's why I think we've gotta, uh, whittle this down, filter it down more, and you gotta have that, uh, pedestrian component. And so that's what I'm gonna propose to y'all, that we do that and that we put it in ordinance form so we can be fair with everybody in the city. There does have to be a little bit of, of judgment with the transportation, or the traffic committee. And again, uh, when we do that, you know, we'll ask Chief Moore to give us, um, statistics and that kinda thing, but I just, I hate for us just to, the easy thing would be to say, let's just pass on this, let's don't do it. But I think they can be of value. I think speed humps can, can really help. And, um, and the, the kids on Baird Drive, specifically, that's, that is a risky area. And, um, and just FYI, for anybody listening or watching, spe- stop signs do not stop speeders, okay? I mean, we, I know that there's times where we use, we have a request for people to add a stop sign here. If you're, um, i- if you're speeding, you, you probably gonna, the stop sign's probably not gonna stop it either, okay? But I can tell you one thing, we watched, um, or I didn't, I won't confess that I watched, but, uh, some of our other people did watch. If you hit those speed humps and you don't slow down, it is gonna get your attention, you know, if you're, if you're truly, you know, going at a high rate.
The one I was not running, we got, just only had two close to the stop. I, I knew where you put them because of the walkways.
Yeah.
They didn't really work that well, but when you added that third one in the middle?
Yeah.
It worked. It absolutely worked.
I think Chesterfield between Brandywine and Rasco is a great, you got, you got two schools converging, you're already twenty-five miles per hour.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there, there's a, that's why I'm saying, you know, having that component in there about the pedestrian, like the kids, cause it wouldn't make sense to put them all the way down Chesterfield. That, that would be a nightmare. That would be a horrible decision.
I agree.
But it does make sense, like you're talking about, in some key areas where the kids are crossing.
Or maybe where there's a small park.
Exactly.
Like a wide ass right there.
But y'all see what I'm saying? I don't want us to, I don't want us to make a, a general, you know, um, you know, large brush stroke to, um, well, we don't have it written form yet. But, you know, I don't want us just to, you know, make a, um, you know, just a general broad stroke and say, no, we're not gonna have them. I think that we can use them effectively if we're careful and we have specifics on where they go.
And I appreciate all the, the additional parameters aside from just stop the speeders. They, that's, that's key to making this efficient.
Yeah, but you, but y'all are right. I mean, there's some, and, and that's why I wanna be fair to our citizens. There's some that are gonna say, well, we know, Mayor, there's people speeding here, and, and there's no doubt. We're not gonna stop out, you know, we can't stop every speeder in the city. But there's no way, it just, when you weigh the plus and the minuses, slowing down emergency vehicles do more harm, you know, you, you, we can't do that, so. Okay, well, if y'all, I just wanna update y'all on that, um, uh, Nick is, is gonna help us put that in written form, right, Nick?
Yes.
And then, uh, we will have that, um, back on a, on a, on a future agenda. Okay, so moving on, a couple of things that won't take real long. Y'all know that, um, we have the funds to do, uh, we budgeted for the new traffic signals at Sweeney State Line, Tullahoma and Church and Guthrie and Airways, so I need a motion to authorize us to advertise for, uh, bids for those projects.
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. And then two quick announcements, um, the Christmas parade. Uh, this year, we've made the decision to move the Christmas parade, uh, to ten AM instead of in the dark hours, and that will be on December second, again, at ten AM. Uh, the reason we did that, talked to the Chamber of Commerce, who's helped us do this, um, we realized that as the years have gone by, um, it's become ri- in the dark, it's become riskier and riskier. You know, you got so many kids, uh, that are lining the roads and we've had a couple of close calls in recent years where kids running out in the street. And so, um, and then the other thing is, from a police perspective, on December second, that's in, on a Saturday night, that's in the middle of our uh, Christmas shopping season. We have heavy demands on our police with retail, um, crimes, so it's better for the city to move that to a daytime event. Uh, years ago, I'm showing my age here, but, um, uh, the parade used to be during the daytime, so I think that that's gonna be a good move for us. We're gonna try to spunk it up a little bit. Uh, that's another thing that in recent years, it was dark and when people got here, um, everybody's just kinda dispersing at City Hall. So what we're gonna do, now that we have the daylight, we're gonna try to, or the, not try, we are gonna do it. The Chamber's already got, uh, some booths set up for fun Christmas things for, uh, uh, kids and people to do in the City Hall parking lot. Uh, then we're gonna, um, you know, bring Christmas music out, hot chocolate, stuff like that, and try to get it to where people stay longer. They don't just all disperse, so everybody can kinda stick around for a little bit longer. So that's, that's gonna be on, uh, December second at ten AM. Southern Lights, um, y'all know that years ago, we, again, we, uh, improved our lighting fixtures there to make the event even better and better. Um, the proceeds to that go to charitable organizations that, that actually work the gate, uh, the admission gate. So, uh, Southern Lights has been a great tradition for South Haven. It's gonna start this Thursday night on, uh, Thanksgiving and it will go through, um, uh, New Year's Eve. So that's all I have this evening. Uh, we'll move on. Uh, next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the personnel docket as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Okay, nothing. Uh, next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, move, move we approve the claims docket in the amount of one million nine hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred two dollars and ninety-four cents, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
Shall we move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries. The need this evening is, um, potential lease of city property, um, potential claims and litigation by or against the city. Economic development in the city, personnel in South Haven Police Department and Planning and Development Department, and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
Shall we move? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, I'm sorry, any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries. The mayor and board are now in our executive session.